Good evening, I would like to call the City of Maplewood Planning Commission to order. Roakel?
Mr. Shaw is present.
Paul Arbuckle, present?
Bill can't be here. Fred down here.
How does he get here?
Looks like we're missing John and...
That's it?
Is John, is anyone missing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Approval of the agenda, any corrections or additions?
Chair and commission staff doesn't have any amendments, the agenda as presented.
Okay, need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
It's been a motion by Bill, seconded by Allen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Passed. Approval of the minutes, any corrections or additions? Did anybody see anything?
Throw a motion.
It's been a motion by Allen, seconded by Fred.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Passed. We are at number five, public hearing, staff?
Chair and commission, thank you. Jane from our planning staff will give the presentation on this application, but before you is a request for 1955 County Road D East. Currently that site and building are vacant, and the proposal before you tonight is for a conditional use permit to operate a used car dealership that is a conditional use within the business commercial district. And Jane can take it from here and provide you more details on the proposed project.
Was that the old prep?
Zebart.
Zebart? That's the one?
Chairman board, yes, that's correct. So it looks like we're maybe having some technical issues with getting the slideshow, but Jane could still walk through the points of the project.
Good evening, Chair and commission. Like Michael said, this evening before you, Mr. Joshua Burz is representing the car buying center and he's here to ask of you a conditional use permit to allow them to convert the vacant building of 1955 County Road D East into a used car dealership. This is an overview map of the area with the red outline showing the site, it's a 0.72 acre lot that's bordered to the north by Interstate 692, to the south and southwest by Strip Center and LA Fitness Center, to the east by Midas, and then to the west by Taco Jones. Chair and commission, in 1985, the city approved plans for Rocky Rococo Restaurant that was never built, and in 1987, the city approved plans for Zab Center which was a vehicle maintenance and servicing garage as well as accessory installation center. Currently it's vacant. The property is zoned as business commercial and it's also designated as a commercial. In the business commercial district, the sale or leasing of used motor vehicles is allowed with a conditional use permit if the use would not be located within 350 feet of the residential property. The property is not within 350 feet of any site the city intends to use for residential. To the details of the proposal, the applicant is looking to convert the 4694 square foot building into a used car dealership, also proposing to repaint the building, re-strap the parking lot, and update the lighting throughout the building. The applicant intends to display vehicles on the outside of the building and utilize the garage for the storage of vehicles. Currently there's 33 parking spaces on the property, 32 regular one accessible parking. According to the city code, one parking space is required for every 200 square feet of office space. Their building would have 938 square feet of office space, and so five parking spaces would be required. There's also three employees that are proposed for the site, and so in total, the city code will require eight parking spaces. Like I said, the applicant is looking to have vehicles displayed, but staff is restricting the display of vehicles just to the side and rail of the building, which we have under conditions. To the shuttle, staff sent out a survey to property owners within 500 feet, we received through responses, all in favor, excited to see reinvestment and upgrades to the units which has been vacant for some time. We also mailed a public hearing notice to property owners within 500 feet, and we published in the newspapers. Today's a public hearing for the planning commission, and hopefully the city council will look at this January 28th to make a final decision. And so staff has recommended approval for a conditional use permit for a used car dealership to be located at 1955 County Road D East with number conditions, which is all outlined in your staff pocket, but I'll just mention a couple of them. And so the applicant cannot display vehicles in the front of the building and in designated customer parking spaces. The applicant can only have vehicles on display on the side and rail of the building. The applicant has re-strapped the parking lot and cleared the side of all trash and debris. Site paid a visit to the site and found trash and debris on site. The applicant would also have to construct trash and dumpster enclosures if they intend to store trash on the outside, they have the option to store trash indoors. The applicant is also recommended to work with the police department, and so when the police department reviewed the proposal, we received comments about that auto centers are usually a cause of theft within the city of Maplewood as well as Minnesota as a whole, and so we encouraging the applicant to work with the police department to come up with ways to ensure an anti-theft environment. There was also not be any auto repair allowed on site. The applicant can only do minor detailing works to prep the cars for sale. Any exterior improvements that the applicant would propose would require city review and approval. With that, staff can stand for questions, the applicant is here and can respond to the commission questions. Thank you.
Is it possible to even park any vehicles in the front there other than on the prop on the grass?
So I'll quickly go back, there is a couple of parking spaces on the front of the building. There is about eight of them, so it's possible to park it in the opposite direction as well, but...
So they could park as close to the edge of the first spot there then, and that's not considered the front then, right? On the very west end there, on the east, I mean the east end on the south?
Chair and commission, if I understand your question, no parking would be allowed between the building and County Road D.
Right.
So no parking there, and then all parking would have to occur on what, the existing hard surface space.
Right, so that's not considered the front then, as long as it doesn't exceed the very front envelope of the building?
Correct. The conditions that Jane outlined are intending, when we're talking about where parking could occur, the front line of the front entrance of the building is what the condition is referring to.
Right, yeah. Anybody have any questions for staff? Should we have them come up?
I have no questions.
Would you like to come up? Go ahead.
The recommendations, can we put up the recommendations again? You're talking about that, yes.
You didn't have your microphone on.
Yeah, the recommendations again, you could, yeah, the last one over there, the last bullet, it said any exterior improvement will require design approval. What about the, the building is currently vacant, what about the interior?
Chair? Yeah, go ahead Jane.
That's vacant too.
No, no, I'm talking about the improvement in inside. Wouldn't that require approvals?
That would not require approval from the city, we approve it if it's exterior improvement. And so if it's exterior improvement and it exceeds $200,000, it will have to go to the design review board. If it's less than that, then city staff can review and approve that.
And Chair and commission, if there's, and first as far as interior work, if there's anything structural going on, building permits would still need to be pulled, but that item is talking about the city's design review process which only relates to exterior improvements.
The look of it, the outside look.
Yeah, because we don't care about the inside.
Yeah.
Well... I do.
You do, but I'm on the CDRB also, and so, you know, we would not look at the inside of your building.
Alright.
We'd wish you well.
Thank you. Do any of you guys have any questions for me?
Chair?
Is there any plans to park the car on the grass there, or no? There is none whatsoever as a show car or anything like that?
No. I know during the winter it'd be covered by snow, so it'd be pretty difficult, and to my understanding, every city doesn't really like cars being parked on grass, so...
And have you guys already connected with the police department? Because I see that as being one of the strong recommendations for reducing theft from your property.
Yep. I've not talked with the police department. I have seen that before with dealerships parking two of them or three of them to just blockade the entrance during the evening, so that's pretty common practice. Installing floodlights at night is good, having video cameras, we're gonna have that. I've had to deal with it in the past, not so much auto theft, but just vandalism and stuff like that at my other properties, so we'll be taking the steps to make sure we're not getting stolen from.
Okay.
And not having any kind of fences anywhere, right?
Wasn't planning on it, no.
And you're okay with all the conditions that are on this proposal?
Yep.
How many cars did it state and how many cars you're typically gonna have for showing?
For showing, we'd be having 26 outside.
26, and inside too, right?
Yeah, inside, I haven't quite figured out the parking plan as far as how it's gonna lay out in there to make it nice. Inside, it can easily hold 15. You can fit as many as 21 in there, but there's no room to walk around at that point, it's just 15 to 17 is a comfortable number to have inside.
And you know about our, the city's ordinance on parking lot striping?
I'm not familiar with it.
The spaces must be 10 feet wide.
Okay.
We do have some businesses here that have forgotten about that, but we like to do that. I don't know, I don't think that applies though for inventory.
Chair and commission, so employee parking can be nine feet wide, actually this year it's versus, it's short term, or I'm sorry, high turnover versus low turnover as far as parking, so it's either nine and a half and then 10 feet, so there's a little more nuance to what those stripes were. The Maplewood Mall, they would be 10 feet, but for auto, for inventory and employees, we typically look at nine for that employee or the striping.
But for inventory, they wouldn't really necessarily have to obey those stripes because it's just their inventory, they could...
Yeah, you know, chair and board, or chair and commission, that's something we'd work with the applicant, but they have the site plan that's been afforded, and that's what we would work to use with them.
Okay.
Are you saying we potentially be allowed to have more than 26 cars parked outside?
I'm not saying anything anymore.
Okay.
You already agreed that this is a good proposal, so...
Okay.
I got nothing.
Fred?
It's pretty straightforward.
Guys are all good?
Mm-hmm.
What kind of cars you gonna have, I guess?
I've always focused on Toyotas, Hondas, Lexus, Acura, and Subaru. My St. Louis Park store does a little bit more BMWs, Audis, Mercedes. That'll probably end up transitioned to more of a luxury store. And then this one, my target price point's gonna be between 10 and 30 grand, but you know, if we get a really nice trade-in or something, you know, it'll sell for whatever it sells for, but the overall goal is to have more of a 10 to 30 grand lot here.
What's the name of the place gonna be?
It's the Car Buying Center.
Okay. I think that's all we have.
Okay.
Thank you, thanks.
I would make a recommendation or proposal or...
Chair and commission, it is a public hearing.
Public, sorry.
Okay.
Never mind.
Feel free to check out my reviews too.
Okay.
Is anyone that would like to speak? Is there anyone that would like to come up and speak? Last and final call, anyone see none? The public hearing is closed.
Okay, I would recommend that we approve this proposal, and the one that's presented to us today, January 15th, 2019, I think the application was complete on December 24th, 2018. This is for a used car dealership at 1955 County Road D East. I don't know anything else I should add to that, but...
The Car Buying Center?
Is that on here?
It is on the, it is on the, very end. Allen?
Is it?
Very top here.
Yes, I'd like to recommend that the Rocky Rococo be constructed. You're making a motion. I'm making a motion, yes.
There's been a motion by, there's been a motion by Bill, seconded by Fred. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing no nays, passed. Thank you. This is just a recommendation, this will go before city council for a final approval on January...
28th.
28th. Okay, thank you.
Just a question for the staff, are we going to be presented documents like this in the future where what the planning commission makes a move, we used to have a separate section saying, "We recommend the approvals of X, Y, and Z." I didn't see it in this one here, so is this the future layout or just an exception?
Chair and commission, the memos still include the commission recommendations when it goes to the city council.
Okay.
So when the city council sees this staff report, there will be a section for planning commission, what the recommendation was within the background section of the report.
I think what he's getting at is that this, this thing here did not have a recommendation on it.
Let's see, it...
Sorry if I'm speaking...
No, you're correct, that's what I'm asking, that normally you see the recommendations that we as a planning commission would make rather than what is going to the city council?
Chair and, so maybe I'm misunderstanding, the recommended action is the second item on your first page.
Okay.
That's what we are asking you to act on tonight.
Okay.
We don't have the section in there yet because the planning commission hasn't acted on it, so when it goes to the city council within the background section probably on page three or four...
It used to look like an official document.
Well, and we even have right here, I'm sorry, on the third page, it does say, "Planning commission will hold a public hearing to make a recommendation on this project," so when it goes to city council, we would update that language to reflect what the recommendation was tonight.
We used to see like a recommendation on the second or third page in bold, so, but now we know how it's worked, so it's all good.
Yeah, I'm a little confused.
The format has changed because at the end of our section, not this conditional use format resolution, before that it would distinctly say that I move, or the city commission moves to approve this particular subject matter and all 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 subsections.
Yep, so this, this has been the format for a few months now, and this is, so the recommended, what you send up, the end of your report is now the second item on the front page, and that, yeah, we refer to the conditional use permit instead of listing the conditions twice in the same section.
Okay, so in our case, in the future, if there is no changes to the conditions, then we are just gonna use the wording that is on the front page and stop there.
Yeah, the intent here is that you could essentially just read that.
Read that.
And then if you do have changes, which I know under this format, we have had changes from this group, then we would communicate that to the city council in their staff report and incorporate that into the resolution.
Okay, sounds good, thanks.
We're flexible, we can, we can handle it.
Yep, thanks.
So, let's see here, we are at...
6A.
6A, new business, planning commission rules and procedure, annual review.
Chair and commission, this is an item, as Chairperson Arbuckle just mentioned, happens annually in January, so you do see these rules every, every year. We are starting to do this this year too with the other commissions to follow your lead in looking at these on an annual basis, so the CDRB looked at theirs earlier today, the head CEO on Thursday will do the same, and then E and R the week following. But we wanted to make suggested revisions for the planning commission to revise within their rules based on some changes that have occurred within the city. Before I get into those couple changes, I do want to note, the city council has to approve all of these potential rules changes with your group and the other commission, so you would make a recommendation, but ultimately the city council makes that decision if they would like the body to operate under these new rules or procedures. So the first item is really a kind of a surface level change where our department name has changed, so the department that staffs this commission had previously been called Environmental and Economic Development Department, it's now called the Community Development Department. The city manager authorized that change, so we want the rules here for the planning commission to reflect that. The second and final change is the more notable one, and I know it came up for discussion here in your meetings in 2018 about visitor presentations being on your agenda with the city council, not any longer having a similar item on their agenda where interested parties or residents could come on, with items not on the agenda and speak to the council, there was commission members that felt some concerns that should the commissions be having visitor presentations on their agenda then. So we are bringing rule revisions through all the commission bodies that would eliminate that agenda item, but again, that's where the city council would be charged with making that policy decision if they wanted the commissions to essentially follow their suit and eliminate visitor presentations. Now I know there had been discussion too previously last year from this group about, does that inhibit individuals or groups or parties from ever getting on an agenda? No, there, there still would be the mechanism of requesting an agenda slot via the city manager, the staff liaison to that group, and that we would assess whether that item should be included on an agenda, if it's appropriate for that group, and ultimately they can always speak to their city council members if there's an interested, or a subject that they're interested or concerned about, that they can talk to their council. So we're making the recommendation at this point that visitor presentations would be eliminated from the agenda to match the policy established by the city council. So with that, staff can entertain any questions, concerns, comments on the proposed revisions to the rules.
So that means that anybody can still come before us as long as they get on the agenda prior to the meeting, at least a couple weeks?
Correct. Chair and commission, they would still have that opportunity. Now, I think if someone came to the city manager and said they wanted to talk about baseball to the group, would that be something that the manager would want the planning commission to be spending their time? So I mean, there's still gonna be the need for a nexus of what they want to talk about with your group that we would analyze.
Right, right.
And I don't mean to be flippant about the subject, but just trying to keep it broad.
Sure, sure, sure. Then also on here, it talked about having a conflict of interest, what, and I've always heard that, what does that completely encompass and what, is if we know the person, or how broad or narrow does that have to be, and when we make those, to fall out of that?
Sure, and Chair and commission, as we, as I answer that question, I do want to point out that at your March meeting, likely our city manager and city attorney are gonna start doing a, kind of a, visiting all the commissions within the city to do some training sessions about those type of maybe ethical issues and other things that the commissioners should be, commissioners should be considering as they're reviewing projects and items, and there hasn't been an issue with that in any, any way, but we're just looking to have a refresher kind of what your roles and responsibilities are as commissioners, and that's with all the groups, since, you know, all the groups have a couple members that are new since we've done that last. But in general, a conflict of interest, I would kind of, as a summary, just say if you have a financial interest in the, in the action being taken, that would be an appropriate time where you would abstain from the conversation.
So let's say I was a member of the Maplewood Historical Society and they came before us, would that be conflict or would that not because I don't...
Yeah, I don't initially, depending on what type of request, but initially I don't see that as a conflict.
Okay.
But if you were owning a business that needed a CUP and you came, that business came in front of us, then you would have to excuse yourself, you would not want to be sitting there making a decision on that CUP.
Yes, Aaron, I would do it.
Now what would happen if, if one of us came in and needed to have a variance or something, what happens in that, when we all know the person then, or we don't have financial, we just, that doesn't matter, right?
Chair and commission, I would suspect that maybe all of you have known people over the time that you've been on the commission that have come up for requests at a certain time, so the person making the request would abstain, but you just from sitting next to Tushar for a few years and he has a request, I wouldn't expect you to have to abstain or have, identify a conflict of interest there.
Okay, okay. Anybody else has any questions? Well, the other one is too, is you need to be called on, I don't know if you guys know that in the rules? You need to raise your hand to be called on.
What?
So if there are no other questions, I can make a motion. Recommend approve the revised planning commission's rule of procedures attached to this report.
I'll second.
There's been a motion by Tushar, seconded by...
Allen.
By Allen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing no nays, passed.
And Chair and commission, I'll just reiterate, this will go to the city council for final approval, we do not have that date identified yet because we want all the commissions to get all their rules done before we bring it, so we can bring it as one package to the city council. So I'll, I'll keep the group informed if we feel there needs to be representation, or just so that you know what's, what's going on on that, on that front.
And if we ever wanted to add a different rule, then we could always add that to the process and then it would just go through the chain?
Chair and commission, yeah, if the, the planning commission at any time can revise its rules and then forward it to city council for a final decision, you don't have to wait till January to do so, it's just January is where we're systematically in place to bring it back to you to revise, to consider revisions.
Okay. We are at the attendance schedule for the planning commission, number B.
Chair and commission, this is not an action item, this is informational, again, this is part of our January doing business. Every year, the planning commission gets an updated attendance schedule for planning commissioners, there is an ordinance requirement that when you have new applications, like the application tonight, that the planning commission be represented at the city council meeting, so there is a rotation that's found, attached to your report with the members' names and numbers. Of course, we've had the informal policy, if you need to switch, that, that works okay. We do, I do want to point out, we do have a vacant seat, so that is, applications are being taken for all vacancies in all commissions right now to the end of this month, so we hope that we'll be able to fill that sometime in February then and have a full commission, and that person would just slide into that portion of the schedule. So if there's any questions, I can answer that at this time.
How come we didn't do a, a reading or something for recognition for John leaving, like we normally do?
Chair and commission, we will, that will be at your February meeting.
Okay, even though he's not here?
Chair and commission, correct. He did resign, but he didn't actually give us his formal recognition, resignation until within the last few days.
Okay. So he, he could come back if he wanted to hear it, or...
Well, he has officially resigned now, but he could apply again, I guess.
Right, no, I mean, he could come into the audience and...
Oh, of course, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. He didn't give me a hug goodbye, I'm disappointed.
He did, he did, I think he, from what I heard, he did email.
Yes, he did, I got an email from him.
We all got an email.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't...
Except for you.
Yeah, I didn't look at that.
But if he did show up, he would not be allowed to speak.
That's right, as he was called on.
Yes.
And this is the schedule here then, too then, for the year?
Chair and commission, that's correct, and actually goes into the first part of 2020. Just in case you want to really get ahead of where your year's going.
Okay. And then we are in the annual report.
Chair and commission, this is an item we would be looking for an action on, I handed out the full report to you before the meeting, you were pages 11 and, I'm sorry, 10 and 11, comprised the planning commission report which was included with your staff report. I did have that sent out to you in December for kind of a preliminary informal review. This will go to the planning, I'm sorry, the city council for formal adoption. I know on the agenda, we had February 11th, but some conflicts came up, and so now we're looking for February 25th, that this would go to the city council where all the commissions and that are staffed by community development would present their annual reports to the city council for final adoption. And so, I know... And so I know most of, I think everyone would be familiar, we started this new format last year to better connect or interconnect the four commissions and the work that they do with staff from community development. And so we wanted to continue on providing a unified report as a heads up as to what we're thinking. We keep the similar format as far as the commissions and city initiatives, but you know, I think we want to work on some of how the narratives are played out and kind of improve the document. So we've had two years kind of utilizing this and want to see how we can make this document even better. So that would be something we'd start talking with you in the fall. We got timing wise because of some issues on the backend for us on community development, got bled out, so we didn't get to it in the fall. But that would be our attention at the end of this year to start working with the groups earlier on how to kind of use that narrative to better describe the themes and the projects that you're working on throughout the year. So with that, staff can entertain any questions, comments, concerns with the annual report, although as we would look for a formal recommendation to forward to the city council.
Good job on that, I think.
Looks nice.
Nice one.
Thank you. How come you have the same suit on in every picture though?
Well, it's the same picture. Chair and Commission, that's something we'll work on. We'll get multiple staff.
Yeah, you have a different suit on for each.
Photoshop now, Michael. Start photoshopping.
Yes, yes. Thank you for noticing that. That means you're looking at it.
Yes, yeah. Does anybody have any questions?
Nope.
Tushar, do you want to make a motion?
Sure. Make a motion to approve the planning commission's 2018 annual report as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion by Tushar, second by Fred. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing no nays, passed. Have they found a replacement yet for the code enforcement?
Chair and Commission, no. That physician has not been hired yet. There has, we did post the physician and we have received applications. Interviews will be occurring in the next couple of weeks with hopefully an offer being issued after that. So in a month from now, I'm hoping that we would have someone onboarded.
No need to hurry.
He wants to while.
The code enforcement, they have no, Chris left.
Oh, okay.
He went to Minneapolis.
Okay.
Okay. Number seven, unfinished business. A amend city code to require developer open house meetings for majority land use applications. That?
Chair and Commission, Jane from our planning staff will present this item, but I did want to just take a minute on the front end. This item was before you at your November meeting where we did a preliminary review and you had some questions about the potential ordinance. And Jane will talk about how those questions were addressed and some further revisions that we're proposing. But again, why this is before you is that there was a council request that major land use items require a developers' meeting before applications are made. And we did spend the last year requiring that informally with our applicants and it worked well. Where like say the Mercedes-Benz project, they had a neighborhood meeting with properties within 500 feet before they made formal applications. So they were able to receive some of that feedback prior to their plans being submitted to the city. And then once the plans are submitted to the city, we do our normal engagement process as well. So there's just another layer of engagement, but that's why it's before you. And so now we're kind of at the stage of working out what the details are and how this ordinance would come together and work. And ultimately, this would again be forwarded to the city council for a final consideration and decision. So with that, I'll let Jane walk through where we're at with the ordinance.
Now, we had, prior, before you go in there, Jane, we had a bunch of questions about the limits and things and that. Is that going to be kind of designated in this? Because we had some big concerns about requiring that.
Yep. That's what we'll be walking through.
Okay. And if you could go just a little slower, Jane, so I can process it?
Okay.
You've had a tough day.
Yes.
Chair and Commission, like Michael said, this item was before you November 20th. You liked the idea, but had some concerns about whether or not variances for garages should go through the same process and as well as an appeal process in the case where city manager unfairly refuses an exemption for something that really requires that. And so staff went back to look at it to try and address some of the concerns that you have, which we would be looking at shortly. So, but again, the intent remains the same to create inclusiveness in the city and to ensure that prospective developers have the opportunity or the avenue to meet residents and try to discuss the projects with them, get feedback and possibly incorporate them in their plans even before they file an official application with the city. We mentioned the other time that there's a number of cities that does this, including the city of Roseville. So this, before you, we are hoping to get a recommendation that would require developer open houses for major land use applications, where we define major land use applications as development that would significantly modify a neighborhood, including variances, conditional use permit, planned unit development subdivision, rezoning and land use changes. The timing remains the same. The applicant will have to hold it on a weekday evening, not less than 15 days and not more than 45 days prior to submission of an application, hoping that it can still stay fresh in the minds of the residents. The location would be preferably somewhere in the city within the neighborhood that the project would be undertaken. The applicant can also arrange to hold it at a city facility in the case that they are not able to find a place within the neighborhood. The applicant would have to notify property owners within 500 feet, just like we do with our public hearing and our neighborhood surveys. And then the applicant is also required to submit a written summary of the open house as part of their formal application to city staff. Under the exemption, the city manager is allowed to give exemptions to the open house requirement for major land use development based on the size and impacts of the proposed development. And based on the comments that you made, we include it, we have added that where the proposed land use development involves an existing single or double dwelling or where the proposed development would not affect the privacy of edges and properties. And so we hoping that for smaller applications like garage variances, applicants or residents can apply for exemption from the city manager. In the case where an applicant is refused an exemption, the applicant can appeal to, can appeal the city manager's decision to the city council. And this is because of your concerns about if the decision of the city manager is not fair. So there'll be an appeal process to the city council to make a final decision. And the ordinance, there is a sample ordinance attached to your staff report and we are still discussing where it would live in the city code. So with that, staff is recommending that you make a motion to approve a sample ordinance to require developer open house meetings for major land use applications, including variances, conditional use permit, planned unit development subdivision, rezoning and land use change requests. We condition that the city manager may approve exemptions based on the size and impact of the proposed development. Thank you. With that, staff can stand for questions.
The exemptions there where it talks about where the proposed develop would not affect the privacy of adjoining properties, how putting in a structure, would that not go over that line for the privacy of the adjoining property? I guess anytime you're putting something in next door, I guess I'm not sure on that definition.
Chair and Commission, I go to the example of when the city approved a conditional use permit for the taco truck at the liquor store on White Bear, just north of this location of, on the other side of 36. I think there would be an argument that that, inclusion of that is not affecting the privacy of the commercial building to the north or south of that.
Okay.
But let's just say we have a single family residential area and one of the older stock homes got sold and sold to a developer who wants to put in now a duplex in it. Would that dictate a meeting of the neighbors before that is given approval or it would not?
Chair and Commission, under this, it wouldn't require a separate developer meeting. It still would require likely a rezoning because if it's a single family. So therefore, there would still be our typical public process that you've always seen thus far, where we send out neighborhood surveys, we do the public hearing notices. So there'd still be that engagement, but there wouldn't be the extra component of that property owner that now owns a single family home and wants to convert it to a duplex to have a developer meeting prior to that.
Even if the zoning's changed?
Even if the zoning's changed, you know?
I personally feel that would be somewhat unacceptable in my mind because I see the city of Minneapolis right now going through a lot of upheaval on their 2040 plan where they are trying to say anybody can put a dual home in place of a single family home without much of a rigor in it. And so I think if we were to do something like that in Maplewood, anytime a single family home is going to be turning into a multifamily home, we should have a developers' meeting around that home so that everybody has a chance to be able to give their two bids.
But Chair and Commission, I just again want to emphasize, today would be the same process as tomorrow. The only thing that the, under the revisions we made on this ordinance based on comments we heard in November is that they wouldn't have to have the developers' meeting, a separate meeting. But they'd still have to do a, you know, our normal engagement where you'd have a public hearing here with your body and then the neighborhood survey and then go to the city council. So that rigor doesn't go away. So it's, it's not a, really the same comparison as to what's occurring in Minneapolis where they, you know, reformatted their zoning code or are going in that direction. They've only done the comp plan at this point. So that's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about an extra element of neighborhood engagement that we don't do today that would be on certain projects. And that's what we're trying to determine with your guidance here on when should that occur. And, you know, we're still considering major land use changes. You know, I don't know if it's adding something unless the use changes to a single or double dwelling, like we could look at that. But again, why we have the language formulated the way it is was that if a single family homeowner, an existing double dwelling, wanted to have a larger garage than what's required by code or have it closer to the property line, yeah, they still got to go through all our processes, but they wouldn't have to then figure out how to hold a neighborhood meeting as a single family homeowner.
But, and I understand that all the rigors are still going to be there. It's just that, to me, that is a very sensitive issue where somebody next door to me decides to put in a duplex, I'm not going to like it. I'd like to have some civil engagement with that developer. So within that 500 feet or whatever that feet distance we have, we should have the developer who wants to switch from a single home to a dual get input from the neighborhood before they move forward.
Chair and Commission, I think there's ways that we can continue to craft the language where we can get at if the existing use of a single or double dwelling were to change, then they're subject to the ordinance. But if we're talking about a single family home or an existing double dwelling making a request, but they're still going to operate as a single or double dwelling as they are today, but they're talking about accessory uses on the site, that then maybe they wouldn't be subject to that, if that makes sense. So I think we can further refine that language to address your concern, but still also on the other end, address the other concerns that the planning commission expressed.
Because I think a lot of the 2040 plans is talking about a lot of the, our areas turning into multi, multi, I can't think of what it is, multi-group things or?
Well, Chair and Commission, no, I, to an extent, but not single family.
Mixed use.
Not single, not existing single family home areas, we're not.
So there's not, there's no singles that are turning into a multi?
The additional mixed use areas that you saw in the 2040 comp plan were mainly in the mall area and the commercial nodes along McKnight and Century where there's existing commercial properties. We're not looking to re-guide any existing single family neighborhoods. That was not part of the 2040 plan.
I'd still like to see, because I'd like to are on the side of the citizens, of the community. So I'd like something that says if a single family is requested to be zoned into a dual or more, then there should be a civil engagement of the neighbors before it comes to the planning commission or the city.
Yep. Chair and Commission, I think from staff level, we can bridge that gap, but we'll be looking for a recommendation from the board, or from the commission, I'm sorry, as to where you would like this ordinance to go.
I think the other addition to this too should also be a written notice somewhere. I know that everything is sent out to the 500 feet, but it'd be nice if they had something like in the review or some other thing showing that there's invite to this open house so that other people knew that we're interested in what's going on in that area.
Chair and Commission, can you help tease that out more for me? The applicant shall prepare a printed invitation, so?
In some type of news media prior to the meeting so that individuals beyond that distance, if they're interested, could come too, you know?
So Chair and Commission, I would, you know, hear further comments. We can include that. We do do that with the public hearing, so we send notices to the affected properties within 500 feet and then we put in the newspaper, the official newspaper that the city designates every year. So that public hearing notice gets placed there. The intent of the developers' meeting was for neighborhood engagements. That's kind of, I think, what's driving it. So I think I would be curious from feedback from the commission as a whole, is if, do you think it would be appropriate at that level of engagement that any property owner from around the city would be encouraged then to go to that, that meeting?
They still have to come here. Yeah, but sometimes it's nice to have input at the beginning stages before it actually goes to here, more people. But I guess if people don't live, I guess they really don't have much to say.
No. Their comments are always, are always in our packet.
That's within the 500 feet, I'm talking about additional.
Talking about putting an ad in the Maplewood review that this is going to happen so people who are interested can show up to that meeting.
Like, let's say they're building, the big apartment building down by Costco. I don't live anywhere near there, but maybe I'm interested in what's going on there, you know? Maybe they've got free food and they want to show up. Yes, Alan?
No free food for you anyway, just to let you know. I just like to know if, since this is the developer open house, developers' open house, is there any standard language that is going to be put in place by the city to indicate the requirements or the intent of the city of what the developer's supposed to do or not to do? Or will the, will the city staff be present even when this is being done or something?
Chair and Commission, no, staff, it's not the intention that city staff would be present at this meeting. It's the intention, the purpose of such a requirement is to have a dialogue between the developer and the neighborhood before the city even gets involved so that the developer would have the opportunity to start making some changes or amendments if they desire before they submit to the city council or to the city for review. Now, there's nothing that would require that they have to listen to any feedback they received and that could be at their own detriment at the end, but that's still up to the applicant at the end of the day to submit what they want considered by the city.
So the outcome of the open house is dependent on the developer?
Chair and Commission, 100%. Yep. You know, we would expect that if there's concerns raised by the neighborhood at the developers' meeting, that we're going to hear those same messages once we start our official engagement as we always have and that we'll be able then to analyze against the plans, did they address that or not? And the applicant will have the opportunity to say why they did or didn't. And then it's up to groups like you and then ultimately the city council to determine what's reasonable and should the developer have done more or did they do enough or, you know, those kind of questions.
Yeah, I'm just trying to avoid the case, you know? Doing tries and stuff instead of, yeah, okay.
So nobody was interested in a written notice that, nobody other than the neighbors? Is that kind of what everybody feels or?
Yeah.
I guess the neighbors would be sufficient for this. Okay. It's not for other things there, you know? Eliminate that from the zoning. I know. Going over to your house. Okay, well, I guess we need a recommendation on this one, right?
I'd like to recommend that we approve it as stated by the staff, the new ordinance requiring the major land use.
One second, Fred. This is not a public hearing, right?
It is not, no.
Go ahead, Fred. Sorry.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this, inclusion of the new ordinance as stated by the staff to amend the city code to require developer open house meetings for major land use developments.
Second. Second. There's been a motion by Fred, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing no nays, it's passed. And this is just our recommendation and this will go before once?
Chair and Commissioner, yeah, we'll go to the City Council for final determination. As Jane mentioned in her presentation, we need to further work with the city clerk on how this gets fit into our zoning code because variances are here, planning, CUPs are here and different actions are in different part of the code, but we want to make sure they're all incorporated. So the intent, the message and the verbiage will stay the same, but we're going to work with the, the clerk to determine how to best roll that out and then it will go to the City Council.
And what section it falls in?
Correct.
We're at number eight then, visitors' presentations. Must be you.
That's me.
Okay.
I was not, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I was not planning on making any kind of presentation tonight, but since it looks like I may be the last person standing as this goes forward, I thought, what the heck, come on up and say something.
If you could state, if you could state your name then?
Yes, my name is Joseph Plumbo. I live at 176 East Kilman Avenue in Maplewood. And as long as I'm here, I, I do oppose the visitor presentation cessation. It prevents us from coming before you as fellow neighbors and presenting any problem or potential problem coming down the pipe. And I think that that discourse is necessary on any commission. And it, I know it's patterned after the, the language that the City Council has, which I don't agree with either. I believe that people should be able to come before their civil servants and their commissioners and bring up any issue that they, they deem appropriate. The, the commissioners can either approve that it's appropriate and run, run those people off, or they can listen. And sometimes listening and having that civil discourse, I think, is a very positive thing. So that, I wasn't planning on saying anything. I'll save my better arguments for the City Council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We are at Commissioner's Presentation, January 28. Looks like Fred is Commissioner Usel.
I'm going to be at the January 28th meeting.
Oh, Tushar, Tushar.
Yes.
Yep, yep, yep.
And I will be there.
Okay.
And then Chair and Commissioner, this next item is where we have the 11th, but the item actually won't go until the following meeting on the 25th, which would be then Mr. Dom's turn on the, on the cycle. But Paul and Fred, if you have?
He should go since he doesn't have to go.
No, it's not my date, it's not my date. February is Valentine's Day that month.
Yeah, but you should be giving the annual report.
Especially if you're the chairperson.
Yep.
I'm just kidding. Anyway, keep going, sir.
Yeah, we'll arm wrestle over it. Any staff presentations?
Chair and Commissioner, I do not have, we do not have anything further for you tonight.
Anybody else have anything?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, there's been a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay.